We're gonna get started. Let's all stand and salute the slide, please.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's an important part of the meeting. Thank you for doing that. Before we introduce some of the speakers, I have just a couple of things for you. First, if you're going to be speaking, come to the center aisle, state your name, your location, where you live. I'll hand you the mic. And please tell me if you have a question or if you're making a statement. If you're having a question, tell me while you're standing who you'd like to address it to, so we can keep this thing flowing. I will try my best to do a pro and a con, so we can keep the thing moving in an orderly fashion. At this time, I'll introduce Chris and Vence some statements for you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming on. Just wanted to take a minute and let you know the topics that we'll be discussing tonight. We're going to be reviewing the shoreline zone ordinance. We're gonna be talking about the shoreline zone map. We have a list of special condition properties that we'll be reviewing. We also have a building and property maintenance ordinance to discuss and a planning board ordinance. And we'll be reviewing some of the warrant articles on the town meeting warrant article for June 20th. So at this time, I would like to introduce John Pottle, the town's attorney. John is gonna be talking about the shoreline zoning ordinance and the map to some degree. And then Kim and I will be giving you a little bit more of the details.
Good evening, everyone. So as Chris mentioned, I'm John Pottle. I'm an attorney with Eaton Peabody. We are, we serve as a town attorney for the town of Heartland. And just so it's hopefully clear to everyone tonight, this is a public hearing. The planning board is here. They are the, we call them the municipal reviewing authority for things such as zoning ordinances. So part of the process when you're considering the potential adoption or amendment of an ordinance is what we're doing here this evening. And as I know is probably not a surprise to many of you, that's often, things come before tonight as well. I know there's been a lot of discussion. There's been a lot of formulation. It's very natural, very common when you're looking at the potential or prospect for ordinance changes. And ordinances are just local laws. They're laws of the town of Heartland. So this is not a town meeting. You're not here to vote up or down on any particular measure. You're here to hopefully get helpful information. If you're a voter of Heartland, hopefully you'll take that information. So if these are presented to you to vote upon, that's helpful to you, whether you're for or against, or maybe you're neutral, or you're still undecided, trying to gather as much information as you can. I wasn't at the last, I'll call it a more informal meeting that the planning board had. And I know there's been other meetings too. I know there were a series of questions and comments that were raised at that meeting. I'll do my best to try to lend some perspective, give some information on those items. But truly, I know we have a large crowd here tonight. And I'm very grateful that Hadley is moderating. But I think it's a great opportunity for everyone to have questions. Have questions, please ask them. If you have comments, please make them. You know, the whole purpose of this exercise is to get more information, share views, debate, so everyone is just better informed, hopefully, leaving here tonight. And hopefully you won't hate me. Attorneys always have to say that to some degree. So let me just give you a quick background on shoreline zoning. It's a little bit different from other types of ordinances that you may have encountered in town. So shoreline zoning has specific state statutes that deal with it. It's called the Mandatory Shoreland Zoning Act. That means the heavy hand in the state of Maine is saying, you must do these things. You must comply with these basic elements, I'll call them, as it relates to shoreline zoning. Those are in the statute. You have to do it. The Maine Department of Environmental Protection, they're the state agency that's tasked with implementing the Mandatory Shoreland Zoning Act. They've come up with much more detailed rules or regulations on shoreline zoning, stemming from the Mandatory Shoreland Zoning Act. You may have heard of them before. It's often referred to as Chapter 1000. If you look at Chapter 1000 of the Maine DEP rules, it sets forth what are called guidelines for shoreline zoning. And they're called guidelines. They're a little bit of a mix, I would say, because they're not specifically imposed on particular towns and cities. You have the opportunity, I'll call it, to adopt your own shoreline zoning ordinance to comply, be consistent with those guidelines that the DEP acts as rules and regulations. And from that, you are therefore consistent with the Mandatory Shoreland Zoning Act. There are, there's a list, certain communities that haven't enacted their own shoreline zoning ordinances. For those specific communities, the Board of Environmental Protection has imposed Chapter 1000 as the ordinance for those particular communities. There's a big long list of them. You can look it up on the website if you want to check it out. Heartland is not one of those. You have your own shoreline zoning ordinance. It's been around for quite some time. The last amendments that I am aware of occurred back in 2009. That's the last time that Heartland updated its shoreline zoning components here in the town of Heartland. I mention that specifically. And part of the process, by the way, when you do enact either shoreline zoning or an update, the Maine DEP looks at it and they say, yep, they certify that we're inconsistent with it. In 2009, the town of Heartland was certified as inconsistent. The Maine DEP, over time, updates that Chapter 1000 as guidelines that all towns need to be consistent with. The latest update occurred in 2015. Now, clearly, since the town last updated its shoreline zoning in 2009 and there were further updates in 2015, the town is not consistent with the update, just to state it that blunt. And you're not the only community. There's quite a long list of folks that are, I would say, in the process of updating their own shoreline zoning ordinance provisions so they can be consistent with those 2015 guidelines that the Maine DEP itself has updated. And as you can imagine, with the COVID pandemic, there's somewhat of a hiatus for folks. We were trying to figure out how to have town meetings in the middle of a pandemic. And the DEP was not necessarily having a heavy hand on, hey, you're not up to date yet. But I think now that we're coming out of it, the DEP, I think appropriately so, is kind of refocusing on all the communities that need to update their shoreline zone ordinances to be consistent with those 2015 updates that they have. I can tell you from other towns that I'm working with, that's exactly what we're doing. So in significant part, that's what the shoreline zoning ordinance updates that are in the proposed amendments are to reflect. If you were to look at the existing Heartland shoreline zoning provisions and what's being proposed, they look a lot different to some degree. And that's by virtue of the 2015 update. It's not bad or good. It's just, that's just the nature of it. The thing that happened in the course of reviewing the updates for the town shoreline zoning is, quite frankly, and this relates specifically to what's called the special condition list. There's a number of properties that were identified. I think there's 10 in total. They're all in the shoreline limited residential zone today. And in the shoreline limited residential zone, commercial use, is the principle of use, isn't allowed, that point blank. But on these properties, there's commercial uses going on. What that means, from my perspective, you know, being the town attorney, is potentially you have an enforcement layer scenario to review because you have potential businesses that are there. They either don't have the approvals that they may have been required to have obtained, or in some instances, have gotten certain approvals to authorize what's going there. But if you look at the zone itself, it's limited residential zoning, which doesn't allow commercial use, except for certain types, like a marina or a campground or like a home occupation. So there's a few exceptions to that. So you've got a number of properties that have that kind of historic use that occurred there. Properties, some have permits, like most don't. And it really creates, in my mind, two pathways, kind of looking forward. One is to the current pathway, which is to look at the shoreline zoning. How might it be updated so it's consistent with the 2015 Chapter 1000? Kind of going forward, allowing what's already been there for years in terms of business use to continue. And the other thing that dovetails with that use are what we call the dimensional requirements. Think of like setbacks, things of that nature. That would relate to the special condition list, where, you know, if you have a use that's been there for 20 years, let's just say it's illegal. But you bless the use, but they still have setback issues. That doesn't really cover necessarily everything. So one pathway is the current pathway, which I think town staff and local town leaders have recommended at this point, which is to freshen up, update the shoreline zoning ordinance. So one, it is consistent with the 2015 update of the Maine DEP. That's the first bucket. Second bucket, we've got this list of properties that frankly are likely out of compliance. Is there a way to do it in the shoreline zoning reflective of its historic use, current property configuration, so that going forward, they're allowed to do, consistent with their historic use, what they've been doing, subject to getting certain change of use and certain permits as required under the shoreline zoning? And that's been the pathway that we're on. The other pathway, quite frankly, is enforcement matter, enforcement case. For better or worse, I and others at my firm, have the task of reviewing and assessing enforcement matters, which ones are worth prosecuting, which ones are not, which ones are maybe potentially appropriate for what we call a consent agreement or a settlement agreement. Sometimes that is appropriate when you have a longstanding violation. Sometimes it's appropriate where the town has issued permits to a particular property. Maybe there was an error in one of those permits. Maybe it shouldn't have been issued, but it was issued. Property owner relied upon it. That can be a valid basis for a consent agreement. Those consent agreements are negotiated. They are obviously public documents. That's the other pathway that this could potentially go down. But I think appropriately so, and I credit the town a lot to this, is kind of being very transparent, throwing it out there, that we have these properties that have potential violation issues. And one potential way to address those is through the shoreline zoning updates. And that's what's been proposed in the current draft amendment. Again, that's a lot to take in. I think that's a lot to absorb. You know, it's essentially a political vote. I'll be quite blunt with you. You can vote up or down on those items. It's a policy choice. It's up to the voters to consider. I will tell you, nonetheless, if all those properties I mentioned are voted down, I'm still going to be presented with how do we resolve this going forward such that it's constructive? Because we still have pending enforcement items. If they do get resolved through a town meeting vote, it's much cleaner, I think, for the town, much cleaner for the property owners as well going forward in that respect. One of the items, I know it came up at the last planning board meeting, it was the issue of spot zoning. And I know one of the attorneys was, in a very well-written letter, raised the issue of spot zoning. So I did want to briefly address that because I know there was a handout for folks to have. And by all means, it's there, please read it. I've reviewed the letter and, you know, I've looked at it myself. And, you know, in my view, it's spot zoning, you have to view it in two different ways. So spot zoning, there's what we call legal spot zoning, falafel. Then there's illegal spot zoning, illegal. So spot zoning has basically two elements to it, two criteria, if you will. One, it has to benefit one particular property. That's one element of spot zoning. That's the case here for the Bryant's Brewery. There's no ifs, ands, or doubts about it. Limited commercial district has been proposed to that property. The second criteria that must be met for it to be illegal spot zoning, it has to be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. That's just the main case law on it. Now, for better or worse, the case law and the comprehensive plan, whether or not something is consistent or inconsistent, you know, when the courts review those issues, what they are looking for is essentially an affirmative statement, something that's very clear that a particular use or a particular activity is not allowed in a particular area. And I've reviewed your comp plan, and I didn't find any. Now, there's certainly elements of your comprehensive plan that talk about, you know, Great Lakes Lake, protection of it. There's growth areas in the village area. Those are all elements there. But I didn't find anything that specifically said that commercial activities in the shoreline zone, in any shoreline zone, was expressly prohibited or firmly prohibited in that respect. Clearly, there is an intention to help encourage and focus development in the village area where there is public infrastructure. That's frankly very normal. But there's nothing in the comprehensive plan that I found that would rise to the level where I would come with the conclusion that this is illegal spot zoning for that particular property. Now, attorneys can certainly differ in their opinions. That's fine. That's what we do for a living. And if it ever gets litigated, a judgment would, you know, have that question before or her. But fact remains that I don't think, it's my opinion that it's not illegal spot zoning from a legal perspective. Putting that aside, I still think for that particular property and the others, there's a legitimate policy question, you know, for the voters of Heartland, is whether or not you support or not support those particular shoreline zoning changes throughout the town, in those specific areas, in some of these specific properties. So part of tonight is to get that information, get particular views and comments from folks. I don't like to stay in a lecture too much, so I hope there aren't a lot of questions and comments. I think this is meant to be engaging and interactive. But I know before we get to the Q and A, I think Chris and Kim wanted to dive down into a little bit more detail on the shoreline zoning map, as well as that special condition list. I think there's 10 properties listed. They're gonna go down through that. Excuse me, I corrected. It's nine, nine properties. They're gonna go down through that in some detail, so we have that information. So until then, maybe hold the questions and comments and we'll go from there.
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me? Sorry, I have a bad, all the allergies here. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Some of you have already seen the summary of changes that we talked about at that last meeting. Just to capture a few things, the biggest four things on that list are gonna be the addition of the limited commercial and the general development districts added back in. And you'll see where it corresponds to what we currently have in 2009 and what the proposed is coming up. Along with that, we're still talking about how they calculate the footprint. That was, that came down through DEP. That's not a town of Heartland change. They changed how we would be calculating people's footprint to make things a lot easier when it comes to volume. They're trying to calculate that. Everybody gets a different thing. So they were trying to minimize the heartache and headache that comes with that calculation. The other big thing, of course, is adding limited commercial and your general development one districts back. And the definitions are right there also, I believe, on page eight. And the other big one was that big talk always on vacation rental use. Is there a commercial business? How is that treated? If you're making money, you know, we don't want to take away everybody's ability to use their home or their home away from home as a vacation rental. However, after I talked to DEP numerous times, I'm like, well, it's nowhere written in here. And he said, hey, some towns choose to put that in that land table so then it's right there. And you will see that on page nine and 10. You just put it in for vacation rentals across the board. There's not a permit required that says yes, 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 so that people are covered in those areas if they're renting out their camps, cottages, and whatnot. You'll see on page 11, a lot of question was always on the commercial lot size. That's still the same, at 60,000 and 300 foot of furniture for the shoreline zone only. That doesn't apply to people not in the shoreline zone. Other than that, that was a lot of familiar faces. So if there's somebody that has a specific question on that, when we get to that, happy to answer you if I can. If not, I'll take it back with me and get you an answer. Thank you. Some of you have gotten the map before, and there's a large one in the back again that shows the areas that are marked for general development and the limited commercial. Is the little purple dot that's up on the lake, better known as Bryant's Brewery. And the general development that's downtown, all the way through by Miami's and down. Again, I know that map is, it's like, there's a little dot and there's tiny, tiny areas to see. So if somebody has a question on that as well, happy to, when we come to that point, discuss it.
Thank you, Kim. So at the last meeting, there was a lot of concern about breaking out each of the businesses. So I want to share with you, the selectmen gave us the go-ahead to prepare this town warrant in a way that breaks out each business individually. We have basically two drafts available at this point. And, but I'm gonna present the one that we're leaning towards tonight. So I'm gonna start with Article 5 and just read through these so that you're familiar with the verbiage. And again, this is a draft copy. It says, Article 5, shall the town approve J and K properties on Commercial Street, known as Matt 20, Lot 34, with approximate lot square footage of 2,178 feet, with a current use as a lawn demand, as a special local condition property due to small lot size in a general district one zone, as depicted on Appendix B of the shoreline zone ordinance, subject to a shoreline zone permit application and change of use designation being applied for and approved within 120 days? Article 6, shall the town of Allen approve Irving Tanning Company on Commercial Street, known as Matt 20, Lot 32, with an approximate lot square footage of 9,583 feet, with a current use as a parking lot as a special condition property due to the small lot size in a general district one zone, as depicted on Appendix B in the shoreline zone ordinance, subject to the shoreline zone permit application and change of use designation being applied for and approved within 120 days? That theme is gonna continue down through on the change of use in the shoreline zone permit. Article 7, shall the town of Hartland approve Thomas Harbor, the estate of, on Commercial Street, known as Matt 20, Lot 31, with an approximate lot footage of 3,049 feet, with a current use of a vacant building as a special local condition property due to small lot size in the general one zone? And again, it talks about Appendix B and the shoreline zone application. Article 8, shall the town of Allen approve Charles Buca on Main Street, known as Matt 20, Lot 20, with an approximate lot square footage of 8,712 feet, with a current use as a redemption center and apartment complex as a special local condition property due to small lot size, again, in the general one, general district one zone, as depicted on Appendix B of the shoreline zone ordinance, subject to the shoreline zone permit and change of use, and again, it's 120 days? Article 9, shall the town of Hartland approve the town of Hartland on Hubbard Avenue, known as Matt 20, Lot 19, with an approximate lot footage of 15,681 feet, with 345 feet on the river, with a current use as a food cupboard slash pantry as a special local condition property due to the small lot size in the general district one zone? Article 10, shall the town of Allen approve Moose Lake Market LLC on Main Street, known as Matt 20, Lot 14, with approximate lot coverage, excuse me, with approximate lot square footage of 31,363 feet, with a current use as a grocery store as a special condition property due to small lot size in a general district one zone, as depicted on Appendix B of the shoreline zone ordinance, subject to a shoreline zone permit application and change of use designation being applied for and approved within 120 days? Article 11, shall the town of Hartland approve Robert Bryant on Great Coast Drive, known as Matt 26, Lot 28, with approximate lot square footage of 43,560 feet, with 300 feet on the lake, with a current use as a residence and brewery in the garage as a special local condition property due to small lot size in a limited commercial zone, as depicted as on Appendix B of the shoreline zone ordinance, subject to a shoreline zone permit application and change of use designation being applied for and approved within 120 days? Article 12, shall the town of Hartland approve Joshua Holbon of Pixfield Avenue, known as Matt 18, Lot 32, with approximate lot coverage, excuse me, with approximate lot square footage of 52,272 feet, with 170 feet on the river, with a current use as a restaurant slash grill as a special condition property due to the small lot size in a general one district zone, as depicted on Appendix B of the shoreline zone ordinance, subject to the shoreline zone permit application and change of use designation being applied for and approved within 120 days? Article 13, shall the town of Hartland approve Christopher Fure on Main Street, known as Matt 18, Lot 33, with approximate lot square footage of 17,424 feet, with a current use as a vacant building as a special local condition property due to a small lot size in the general district zone, as depicted on Appendix B, and again, the 120 days? So that is the list of the special condition properties. And I'm gonna hand it back over to Hadley for questions.
Okay, as we found out last time, there was a lot of conversation on both sides. So I'm gonna open up the floor and try my best to keep swapping back and forth so everybody gets the same amount of time and you get your voices heard. Yes, come on up. Do you have a question or a statement?
Question.
To who?
Any of the selectmen.
Any of the selectmen.
Any of the selectmen.
So my question is, do we no longer as townspeople have the right to nominate and vote for a moderator? That always happened in the past. Why didn't it happen this way, or in the last meeting? My question was, do we as townspeople no longer have the right to nominate or vote for a moderator? It was addressed to the selectman. It was addressed to the selectman.
He'd also have representatives too, so we, we thought.
Can you use the mic please? Yeah, would you come up? Use the mic.
I can hand it to you.
Yeah.
There you go. Thank you.
That's a, it's a really good question. So in a town meeting, you're absolutely correct. You nominate, you elect, uh, moderator. So the town moderator at a town meeting, they're an elected official. This is not a town meeting. Um, usually public hearings are, are I think not moderated, but there's nothing that prohibits having someone help moderate or facilitate the discussion. So I think that was the intent for this evening was just to have someone to help uh, facilitate the discussion, take questions and comments. There's no requirement to have one. There's no requirement to not have one. There's no real formal process. You don't elect a moderator at a public hearing. You absolutely would at a town meeting. You're right on that respect.
Or a special town meeting?
Or a special town meeting. Correct.
So who picked this moderator?
I asked Heather to moderate this meeting. That was me. Yes, sir. Come on up.
So, uh, Chris, I guess my question's to you. The articles, just to clarify, each one's going to be individual. We're going to vote on each one individually. Am I correct in saying that with what you just read? Okay, thank you. That answered my question from the last meeting. Thank you. My next question is a two-part question. It is yet to be answered. And this is for the selectman, not Chris. So the first part to my question, they're not paying attention. They're having a side conversation. This question is to the selectman. Why is there a town lawyer specifically for Bryant's Brewery? The last selectman meeting specifically for Bryant's Brewery with an executive session of over two and a half hours. The second part to that question is, we have a lawyer specifically for Bryant's Brewery that the townspeople are paying for. Okay, which means me. I don't understand why we have that lawyer specifically. I get that everybody should have used that lawyer, but it seems to be every time the lawyer comes to selectman meetings, it's specifically for Bryant's Brewery. So the second part to that question is, what has the selectman or the town manager done wrong to feel that they need that lawyer specifically for Bryant's Brewery? And tonight I would like an answer on both them questions. I have yet to get an answer and I've asked this question three or four times.
So we're going to have a couple of people field that, those two questions.
Okay, Jerry Martin, Hartland. I am the select board chair. And in my opinion, the reason we need his expertise, and I can again only speak for myself, we need his expertise to dive into as to the tolls, as to Bryant's Brewery. There's a lot of nuances in here that yes, maybe we should be well-educated enough to know everything about every ordinance and everything. Well, we, I personally am not that person. I want to know the, all the, the lawyer, the deep lawyer stuff that we don't know. And as you saw right there, yeah, we kind of turned to him because again, we are part-time selectmen. We don't know all these nuances. When it comes time to come in front of all of you, we want to know what we're talking about. We don't know everything. And at the end of the day, we're still, we're one of you. We may be upfront here, but we're still one vote at the end of the day. We want to get this right. It has been in the rears for a while. So having said that, the expertise that they bring as this uh, lawyer and this lawyer can help with is giving us all input. So when we come down to a decision, and again, we brought him here to help you folks with the information that you would need to make an appropriate decision in this matter, if that helps at all from my perspective.
I echo what Jerry said. I think, uh, you have tonight, Mr. Frente, if that is your last name. He represents the tolls. You have Mr. Pease.
Uh, Mr. Weyer.
Okay, I'm sorry, who represents, uh, Bob Bryant. And so what we want is someone who represents the town. If you are here and you have the best interests of the town, listen to the town's attorney. Okay, certainly you're, we all need to listen to the cases that may be presented here tonight. But at the end of the day, they have counsel for a reason because they have special interests that they're trying to support. Understand, they have every right to do that in our democratic system. But I for one, as a selectman of the town, want this person whose desire is to give us the word as we protect our town. And that's why I'm glad he's here. I think the inference was it was a long meeting. There is a reason for that long meeting because, uh, as Jerry mentioned, the issues are complex. They aren't as easy as it is to say, um, Jim and I have looked at the same, uh, topic before and disagreed on that, and neither of us are trained lawyers. These lawyers right here have already indicated that there could be some disagreement in what they have, and they've been to law school. So I will tell you for us, we'd like the chance to dive in as layman and ask question after question to clarify what the issue is. And that's why we have, uh, a town's attorney who helps, uh, with the best interest of the town.
Uh, before you get back up, I have to ask somebody else. Do you, does anybody else other than these two have something to say at this point? Then I will get back. I want to keep it going both ways. Question or comment?
I guess it should be a question.
Two?
Select board, now Chris.
Okay, the question is going to be headed to the select board or Chris, fire away.
So you guys are saying Bryant is in the right and he's saying, as Toll said, they're in the wrong. Where's the documents saying either way? I ain't seen the documents saying either way. He's in the right, he's in the wrong. Where's the documents stating? Stating that, uh, Mr. Bryant's in the right. The other documents showing, proving this, uh, somebody should be showing the documents. Then we won't have all this idea.
To share.
I would say.
So the question's out there. Who would like to field that, please? Hang on, I'll get him on mic. Oh, he's coming.
Thank you, John Heiko. I don't believe that we have taken, I have not taken a position. So I don't believe that, uh, this is a very legal issue that there can be a lot of ramifications happen and things that we don't understand. None of us are learned in the law other than our town attorney. But as far as that question goes, I don't believe we've made a decision to side with anything. We are still gathering this information. I don't know, I can't speak for the other two, but I certainly have not. And I don't believe that, that that particular decision has been made at this time. Did that answer, because I, I heard what you said, Rod, but I don't, I don't believe that. This is a serious legal issue and I don't believe that we have made, uh, any decisions at all on this. And I would like to also mention that I was reading that draft and I think all of you got a copy of the draft and it may say, "Selectmen appro- uh, recommend." I can tell you that it's just a draft. I was told that. I asked this and I've asked, I asked to clarify this, that there's no recommendation made by the select board where it says recommendation. I don't know why it's on there, but it's on there. But there's no recommendation that has been made by the select board. So I just wanted to, I wanted to clear that up. So on the draft that you're wa- you're looking at with the ordinance and all of the different businesses that are up for, for voting up or down on, on their zoning change, uh, we did not make any recommendations as of yet. Thank you.
Yep, Chris is up next.
So the question, the question was, uh, it, does Mr. Bryant have a permit that allows him to do what he's doing? Okay? So the reason that we're presenting nine businesses is because all nine businesses are equally out of compliance. Okay, at this point in time. Bob Bryant is the only business in the group that has a planning board. Uh, let me, let me rephrase. He has a permit signed by the code officer. It is not signed by the planning board. Okay? So he does have a permit signed by the code officer and he also has a permit signed by the LPI. I have copies of each right here with me tonight. The other businesses downtown don't have any of these, uh, now. It's not their fault. It's the process that we've always followed in town. We just didn't focus on the downtown. As far as, if somebody's come to start a business, we've always been supportive of that. So, uh, again, it's no fault of their own necessarily that they don't have the right, uh, permits, but we're trying to rectify that as a group and as a whole. So, uh, at this point in time, the person with the most, uh, complete portfolio of permits is Bob Bryant.
Yo, you ready?
Whenever you are.
Come on up.
You're the moderator.
Thank you for waiting.
Yeah. Mine was read back to my question and the answers that I received. So, and I'm going to address this to Mark. Come on up. We can share. So we're saying that, I understand what you're saying, that the town needs a lawyer because obviously they have lawyers, the whole nine yards. It just seems to me, because now I do go to all the selectman meetings, that our lawyer, the townspeople's lawyer, has been to numerous meetings specifically for Bryant's Brewery, which is cost-effective to us. Obviously somebody has to pay the man. So are you telling me that the only reason we have our lawyer is because of their lawyers and not because somebody in the town maybe signed a permit too soon or whatever? The town, selectmen and the town manager did not make any mistakes. Is that what you're telling me?
So let's take your, your question one at a time.
Sure.
You haven't been to all the selectman's meetings. Sorry.
I said, right.
Mark first. And in that, he has come or another member of his firm have come to advise us on a number of different issues. Recently, if anybody like yourself's been following what's gone on in the town, uh, certainly this issue comes up every selectman's meeting. There is someone who comes and in a public forum wants to talk about some facet of the shoreline zone. It, it's, it's actually how we understood that we were out of compliance. And as has been said before, every business in town, okay? I for one, want to keep every business in town and to attract many more. So when the issue came up with the tolls citing, uh, issues, legitimate issues, uh, they actually, I commend them, they're the ones who, uh, helped us understand that we are out of compliance. Uh, and, and there's nobody on the board that desires our town businesses to be out of compliance. We, we, we want to be compliant. So the issue is the recent, uh, times, and if I can just direct this question either to Chris or, uh, John. Uh, I don't know how many times you've been here specifically on that. Is it once? Okay. So this last time when John came, it was a very lengthy meeting because we were, uh, trying to figure out the complexities and, uh, has there been mistakes made? In my best estimate, from what I've heard, there has been. There has been a board, a planning board who would normally sign a permit. And in this case, that didn't work out. The code enforcement officer signed that. So if that's, if that's where the, the issue is, and can I just tell you, even if that is wrong, okay? Not right. Can I tell you something? Uh, I've had a business in town, uh, you, I just ask you as property owners, if you came to our planning board and sought their consent to what you were trying to do and somebody came who recog- identified themselves as the code enforcement officer to give you a permit, I for one wouldn't know that that isn't how things would work anyway, to be honest with you. Municipal government isn't as clear sometimes as, uh, as we would like to say that it is. So the issue is, we've had a sundry of issues like that. Or, no, that's the only mistake I just wanted you to know, that I know of. All the rest are ways that we can work through the process. But if I were coming again to open a business in town, and if you want to open a business in town, we'd like to talk to you. But if you did and you talked to the planning board and you didn't, you came to them three times, I believe I have seen, and then they're doing their due diligence and asking for more information and in that time, the code enforcement officer, not sure what the communication issue was, issued a permit. Let me just ask you this, okay? Is, is that wrong of the entrepreneur who's trying to develop a business in town? Now, you can argue that that isn't the right process. It's supposed to come from the planning board. Totally, totally agree. But when you look at the entrepreneur, is it his fault that he didn't get it from the planning board, that it came from the code enforcement officer while he was trying to get his permits? And I would like to just explain to you that I don't think that was an egregious issue on the entrepreneur's part. And those were some of the questions that we were talking, uh, to the attorney about. But that was a small part, uh, we obviously not going to get into as an executive session. But those were issues that we talked about there and apologized for people who were, um, thinking that was too long. But the other side of that, I think the people elected us to actually drill down with our attorney to make sure we mitigate, uh, any issue for the town and what, and seek his advice as we have before, in what is the best, what isn't the best for the town.
Thank you. That's my point I was getting to. Thank you. So my point is, is maybe if somebody would have come forth at the beginning and said, hey, maybe there was a mistake down here. We need to get somebody else involved, get a lawyer. This is why, this is what's going to happen. Thank you for explaining. I for one, and also for every business that we can get in this town. I am not against Bryant's Brewery. I'm against money coming out of my pocket paying for a lawyer that maybe we don't need, obviously now that we know we do need. That was the answer to my question that I needed three times ago. Thank you.
Yes, Jerry.
I would just like, I would just like to make one correction, that something that Chris said. He had mentioned that the difference between these two things going on is this guy's got a bunch of documentation. I summoned the permit for you, did I, Don Jim? For your laundromat and did your work? Yeah. The only thing is, back then, I'm as guilty as the plumber who did that work. I didn't know that it was a limited residential zone that your laundromat was in. Nobody knew exactly why. So Chris had mentioned that he's got something that, and again, I'm not just saying it's all about this, but let's be serious. So we did all the work on your stuff. We shouldn't have done it. There's a mistake that I made, okay? I pulled a permit from the, for the, for the LPI. There's a mistake that I made, okay, I pulled a permit from the, for the, for the LPI, and technically I shouldn't have done it. It didn't qualify, but I didn't know. Oh, I appreciate that it's been here forever, and everybody wants it to be here forever. I wanna be, go down the middle of the screen like I used to, you couldn't throw a rock in any direction, you wouldn't hit somebody's business, and it ain't that way no more. I mean, you guys done a great job sticking it out in this town, as many have. And we're just trying to pave it to so that nobody loses here. Because I know you guys are carving out your little piece of the world up there, and it's beautiful, it's a gorgeous place, anybody looks at it, it's to die for, as is his property. But again, we wanna make it just as easy as we can for any business to stay here, make this town prosper, and keep moving on. That's all we ever wanted to do. But I wanna clarify that on your part, you also had the documentation when you did that, for what it's worth.
So, let's take a pause with the questions just for a second, and let, that's okay, that's what I was gonna do. Let's let these people talk, because some of your questions might be answered in their presentation, so, yes, come on up. Introduce yourself, and be ready for spitballs and stuff.
Hi, uh, can you guys hear me? No, how about now? Better? Right close, okay. So I'm Cameron Ferrante, I'm the attorney at Pretty Flavering here for Karen and Jim Tool, um, I think we all know what we're talking about tonight. I do have one question for Chris and Kim before we start, on the special local conditions. That's just due to the dimensional standards and minimum lot size requirements, correct? It's not about, it's not about the act, sorry. Sorry. The special local conditions, that's just due to the dimensional standards and the minimum lot size requirements, it's not in relation to the specific commercial operations on the properties? Yeah.
Can't hear you, Kim. She gotta stand up. Hold the phone.
It is directly written into the lot sizes for everyone on that list.
Okay, great, okay, just wanted to, okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was the case, I just get a lot of feedback here, sorry about that, so. Now it's time for my statement, so I, I think everyone's pretty unified here that businesses are good for heartland, and no one wants to see a business closed, I think. The primary concern is what are the appropriate locations for the businesses, and how to make sure the town isn't compounding past mistakes by making present mistakes. I think, uh, while I agree with John Poddle's assessment of spot zoning, I think he's kind of looked at a key element there, which is that the comprehensive plan that the town adopted in 2016 doesn't need to have magic words in it that say, you can't do this, or you can't do that. All you have to look at is the balance of the recommendations within the comprehensive plan, and if the current zoning ordinance or the zoning ordinance amendments aren't in, what they say, basic harmony with those recommendations or strategies, then even if there's no magic words, a proposed change can still be invalidated by the DEP on review or by a court on challenge, you know, some sort of litigation, which I hope we don't end up getting to. But the fact of the matter is that even without magic words, what you've got here is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance that affects a specific property, a specific business, and goes basically against every recommendation that's in the 2016 comprehensive plan. There's two areas of town that are identified in the comprehensive plan, the village area and the rural areas. Because there was no limited commercial district or general development, one or two district at the time, the only recommendations are related to the rural area and the village area. Within the village area, commercial development is strongly encouraged, within the rural areas, non-agro, non-agricultural, excuse me, non-agricultural commercial development is actively discouraged. The only things that are supposed to happen, based on the town's recommendations back in 2016, in rural areas like where Brian's brewing is, are home occupations, which are described as low intensity a- activities that are in, or that are compatible with surround and residential uses. I don't think we can look at Brian's brewing as it stands today and say that it's a low impact home occupation that's compatible with residential uses, I think it's an outdoor and indoor brewery and coffee roastery that's hoping to host concerts and other sort of outdoor events. I don't think that necessarily belongs in a residential neighborhood, I think there's ample other places in town where it could relocate to and be compatible, such as within the village area, once it's rezoned, this general development, would have ample opportunity to move there, bring development to where it was intended to be in town, and become compliant with the town's amended shoreline zone ordinance. So, I'd just like to reiterate that essentially we don't have a problem with the text of the ordinance, the amendments are bringing you into line with what DEP hopes to see, with what the state hopes to see. The problem is with the zoning map and the individual designation of Brian's brewing as its own zone, which we believe constitutes illegal spot zoning, and would ultimately result in the proposed amendments being rejected by DEP and potentially invalidated by court. At this point, we don't see any reason why the select board, the planning board of the town, should be risking all of the effort that's been put forth so far to create these amendments, to review them, to have and receive public comment, just to potentially benefit a single business. And it goes, bears noting, and even if the amendments pass, there's still significant issues facing Brian's brewing. It's currently, has an illegal holding tank installed, it's currently probably not able to meet the planning board performance standards under the amended ordinance, so even if the amendments are adopted, it would still have to receive the change of use permit approval, which, I mean, in my opinion, would be a big uphill battle. So, I think the town, I'd encourage you to consider your options, consider the value in taking these actions, and whether they truly are in the best interest of the town, or sort of just a last ditch effort to try and rectify all the mistakes and possibly compound them if they was. Thank you.
Okay, so, next we have our other lawyer, what was your name?
Stephen Wag.
Well, you can introduce yourself.
Thank you very much, sir. Stephen Wag, can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
So I'm with the law firm, Rodden and Winchell, and the, you unfortunately have three lawyers, and there are at least three in the room today, there could be others hiding better than us. Uh, but I'll, I'll keep my remarks very brief, cause, uh, really, I, I, my client, uh, Brian's brewing can speak for themselves on, on the policy issues today, and that, and that's really where I wanna focus your attention. At, at the end of the day, this is a legislative decision for you as the legislative body of the town to make. That is what we are paid to do, uh, so let me just, since I've been requested, uh, summarize our, our position on this, uh, so that you have my opinion as well as the opinion of the other, uh, two attorneys here. So, uh, spot zoning, I, simply, I, I don't think there's a strong case at all, uh, for this to be spot zoning, and I think it's a attempt to divert from directly addressing what is just the simple question before you of, is passing this zoning change, in your view, good for the community? Is, is that an appropriate zoning decision to make, and in your view, consistent with your vision of the community? So, the reason I say I don't think that there's a strong case for spot zoning is, I, I agree with Attorney Poddle's, uh, framing of the issue, which is exactly right. So spot zoning, the Supreme Court of Maine has made clear, spot zoning is not a dirty word. It, there's a difference, there is legal spot zoning, and there is illegal spot zoning. So the analysis is not as simple as, does this not have a box that looks like it's sitting in ocean by itself? That, that's not the analysis, it's instead, you know, do you have a single property benefit? And I can see that, that, that's recognized here. The second question is, is the zoning decision inconsistent with your comprehensive plan? Now, I, I represent, uh, dozens of municipalities, usually I'm sitting where John Poddle was sitting, and, uh, a- as, as well as developers, and, and what I will advise all my clients all the time is that to argue, uh, that something is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, it's a long shot argument, it, it is an ex- and the reason I say that is it's an extremely difficult hurdle to pass. There is a broad presumption in favor of the legislative body that you as the town know what's best for you as a town, and a court is going to be extremely reluctant to overturn that legislative judgment. And, uh, I, I also respectfully disagree with the attorney of the towels when I think the case law, uh, is, is not as simple as can you find a few points in the comprehensive plan that, uh, aren't consistent with this amendment? It is a test of basic harmony, but what the case law has shown us, and you can go to the cases even cited by, um, Attorney Towles, in Attorney Towles' letter, what the cases have shown us is you've gotta have something really compelling. Like, this specific type of commercial use is not something we want in the shoreline zoning district. And I've gone through your comprehensive plan, and I, I agree with your Italian attorney that I'm, I'm not seeing something like that, so I think it's extremely likely that a court would overturn the judgment of this town. Uh, which brings me to the larger, bigger picture here, that ultimately, this is a judgment question, it's a policy question, and I'm not gonna begin to try and give you the policy reasons for or against this, I think you're all in the best position, position to make that determination, so I suggest you don't get lost in the legalities. This, if this goes to litigation, I hope I share everybody's hope that that's not what happens here. That's a judgment for the court, I, I think it is a extremely difficult case to make out, but, uh, certainly it's within someone's right if they want to bring that litigation against the town, if they don't like the result of, uh, what the people have decided. And, um, finally, I, I, I do also, I actually agree, uh, with a point that's been made, uh, by the Towles attorney, that thi- this isn't the end of the road. Even if this Article 11 ultimately passes, there are many more steps, uh, in the process and alleged, uh, some service water violation, uh, apparently, but also the change of use application. So, voting for this ordinance merely changes the law to allow that process to begin, but it is not the final say of whether the use is allowed or how exactly it will be allowed. Uh, so I have nothing further.
You would know it with mine, you wouldn't understand.
Oh, I, I lied. I didn't understand.
Uh, Chris is gonna have a couple things to say, but after that, uh, I kinda like those two lawyers standing up here, so we're gonna get them back, and if you have questions for them, they're getting paid to let you use them.
Are we gonna have questions for those people?
Yes, yes. I won't leave until everybody's exhausted, including you.
Yeah, so, the first thing that I wanted to address, uh, is, uh, Kim and I spent a great deal of time and effort researching this, uh, communicating with the planning board members, communicating with, uh, the selectmen, the attorneys, uh, we've also spent a great deal of time communicating with the DEP. And it's, it's being stated that they may turn this, uh, over if we agreed to it. The fact of the matter is, is they've helped guide us on the language and the, uh, map that we are presenting it, now, that is a fact. The DEP has read it, they've reviewed it, and, uh, it is a preliminary approval, okay? Doesn't mean they'll prove it when it's all said and done, but they, we have sent it to them, uh, and they spent a few days looking it over. So, just wanted that, uh, I wanted everybody to be aware of that. Kim, myself, John, we went to a meeting with the DEP and the CDC, and there were thirty people in the room, there, there were several people discussing Brian's brewing in detail, okay? And, uh, again, we're, we're coming to our recommendations to you based off all the research that we've done. So, I just wanted you to be aware that, uh, we're not just frivolously providing documentation to you and providing ideas, uh, this has come with a lot of effort. I wanted to read a few things out of the, uh, comprehensive plan, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, but I wanted to share it again, um. In our comprehensive plan for 2016, our vision, uh, stated, our vision is a pleasant rural community that values and protects our natural resources, provides opportunity for good quality of life, encourages recreational opportunities, and recognizes the need for responsible development while maintaining a strong sense of community in place in the region. The goal for the local economic development was to promote an economic climate that increases job opportunities and overall economic well-being. The policy that, that came out of that comprehensive plan was to promote Great Moose Lake as a destination in the region and encourage reasonable development. And, um, I just wanted to, I, I didn't write down the pages that, where I got those quotes, but that's directly quoted out of the comprehensive plan. Uh, this is page 133 out of our comprehensive plan, and under policies it says, again, promote Great Moose Lake as a destination in the region and encourage reasonable development. The strategy, uh, work with the Great Moose Lake Association and look to ways to increase visitors and amenities, services that would cater to them, okay? And again, uh, these are just some points that I wanted to bring up, that we spent a lot of time and effort on.
Okay, back to questions. Maybe not.
Just one quick comment, or maybe it's a clarification, I know Chris had alluded to this earlier, uh, the, the draft warrant article is, is a concept draft, I think that was reflective of some of the discussion of the last, me and the planning board, there's, there's more, there's, it's not the only way to do it, we have a separate warrant article for each specific property, you could group them together, and that's another approach to do that, so, I don't think, the, to my knowledge, the select board has not chosen, uh, necessarily, you know, which concept to marshal forward, but I know that one of the benefits, as we've talked about tonight, you know, beforehand, you group it all together, it's pretty normal when you're considering, uh, ordinance amendments, if here's the ordinance, up or down, doesn't mean you can't break it out, so, just to clarify that the draft you have has that broken out, it ultimately will be the select board's decision on, on how best to advance and present those questions to voters.
Okay. Taking a chill here for a second, are there any questions? Any comments you'd like to? Yes? You gonna use this mic, or would you like that? Question or comment?
Comment first, that Chris can nod to, for the, the comprehensive plan, um, and then the question to our lawyer, and then the-
So the question is to the town's lawyer, and I commented Chris. Oh dear, and a question from Chris as well.
Our lawyer just said something.
Uh, back in 2016, when the comprehensive plan, a lot of you, I don't think even lived in town at that point, um, and at that point in time, every town, every house in town was given a survey so that we could, um, give our opinions, they were allowed, we were allowed to drop them off in, in different places, but we all, as townspeople, were invited to come for a Saturday work session. I was one of those keeping my attention, attendance. That mission statement that he read is a hundred percent what we voted on, agreed on that day. on that day. My belief is, at that time, my understanding was that the shoreline zoning only applied to the lakes that we have. So, we didn't think of anything, so that people know, the two attorneys are coming, we didn't think of the river coming down being shoreline zoning, that the businesses had anything to do with it. So, the nod, who I think I'll get, I believe that after you and the gentleman, KB Card, wrote the official comprehensive plan from what we developed, or things like that, that you gave it to the town's attorney, which I don't think was this gentleman's time, Pete Buddy, I think it was somebody else. So, I'm writing that, I understand. Yeah, okay. So, if this has been, I know you and Pete Buddy, he's been our lawyer for a long time in the town, and I know you haven't been back twenty years of doing all this in the town, how is it that, even though we had a marijuana ordinance that came out recent, a few years ago, and one of the described venues here, or the tenant, is where they wanted to put that store, why is it that we never were told that we were in violation? Do you, they only ask you to look at certain things, so, and you don't look at the whole thing that town's doing, I don't know how it works?
So, I'll do my best to answer, it's a very good question. So, I hope this is responsive to the question. So, in 2016, when the comp plan was updated, the comprehensive plan is very much a guidance document, so there weren't any at that time shoreline zoning amendments in play, last time, 2009, so, it's very possible someone at my firm looked at the comprehensive plan, if they did, my suspicion is they would be looking at it from, okay, are all the unnecessary legal elements of a comp plan there? There wouldn't necessarily be, okay, let's go back to our shoreline zoning and try to revamp that. What could have been, potentially likely, is in 2016, that would have been on the heels, if you will, of the 2015 update by the DEP. So, there may have been comments that, well, that's recent, so, there's a need, a planning need, to look at the shoreline zoning provisions and then further update them. It's very similar from other towns, it's been going on for years. Now, specific to, I guess we'll call them the properties with issues, if I can put it that way, maybe we'll dump that with the gentleman's comment from earlier, so, I and others at my firm, we definitely don't go searching for legal issues by any means, that's not what we do. You know, we're here to provide service to the town, you know, as the town may need us. So, it's not frankly unusual to find what might be sometimes called a latent or an old historic issue that just no one had really looked at, and the fact remains, has been discussed tonight, you know, there's a pending enforcement scenario review involving Brian's brewery, and that's pretty plain and simple. From that, it became clear there's some others. So, sometimes it's just a product, it's just a product of, okay, we've, this issue has come to light, and all of a sudden, you find these other things through review and analysis, so, you know, I'm not hired to go hunting for issues, I'm here to respond to them and hopefully help, to the best of my ability, you know, guide the town through those legal issues.
So, can you hear me? This question's because something Mark gave us for information that I had no idea of. So, I know my employment, my employer has insurance on me, if I do something inappropriate against some rule, law, guidance, whatever, that there is insurance in place, that they don't have to pay out of pocket, a lawyer, there's an insurance claim for liability insurance. Does the town have liability insurance on you, Kim, Selectman, anybody, Sam? So, and is, so, if I heard the word that a mistake was made, and I'm assuming an honest mistake, I don't think there was any intent, has an insurance claim been filed on that liability insurance, you're noting a hit that we have, so that we can, as townspeople, not fund the full thing here?
Chris, would you like to respond, or?
Another very good question, I'll do my best again to respond, and by all means, Chris or others can supplement. So, the town does have insurance policies in place, and Chris, I'm sure, knows some of the ins and outs of that. There is also, under state law, something we call the Main Tort Claims Act, and what that does is it provides immunity to the town for certain types of claims, and then there's a whole bunch of exceptions to that in the annuity, then there's exceptions to the exceptions, it's classic legalities. In addition to immunity, there's a limitation of damages, which is $400,000. Now, those are, you know, imagine a potential claim under that, that's more related to, you know, the town snowplow, you know, damages of property, or, you know, heaven forbid, there's an injury, it's things of that nature. When you're talking in the realm of permitting, those types of governmental functions, they're characterized, they're called judicial functions, so as long as you're acting within the four corners of that, there's actually immunity in the Main Tort Claims Act. Now, just because the town may be immune from a tort claim doesn't mean like another claim may not come, but, you know, in this respect, here's two key things, I would say, under this current scenario. You've got the main Department of Animal Protection and its various divisions, I'll call them, shoreline zoning, CDC, wastewater plumbing type issues, they have oversight over the town and how it implements, how it, what it has for regulations and how it implements those. So, there is the potential for the main DEP could literally sue the town of Heartland. Now, do I think that's going to happen? I don't think so, but they can certainly threaten it. They've threatened to take municipalities to court before for those types of issues. So, there is always that potential from the state agencies having that oversight authority over the town. It's very typical, from my perspective, when you have what might be a land use issue, a compliance issue, if there's a potential enforcement matter, it's very typical that you involve the town attorney, because they can be very fact-driven, they can be very complex, and...
That's why I asked the question, is there a liability claim that will take for some of your time?
My guess is probably not, but Chris can answer that more specifically, I don't think it's going to trigger anything under your policies.
All I said was that, that was, I understood your saying, and those are very good points, but what I was, pardon my question, was when, we know we're going to pay your time, because these gentlemen are being paid, so if we had to pay you, because you represent us well, we know that. So, my question was, if there was a similar situation with my employer, the lawyer would be paid out of the insurance claim for the liability insurance, that's what I was asking, if the insurance claim, because of there, what we learned about tonight, is filed on liability insurance, so that your can be paid.
I'll say without a hundred percent confidence, except I've reviewed the specific policies, but I don't think there's coverage for a situation like this, and Chris can confirm that, and if there was, my high suspicion is there was a deductible that wouldn't be met by what I'm doing.
Yes, I see a hand way up, stay right there if you'd like, and I'll bring you the mic.
Hi, I'm Barry Oyster, I live on Great Moose Drive. Comment was made by a lawyer earlier about, we're making a legislative decision for what's best for the town. We've got three lawyers here right now, we've got two sides against each other, we've got a big problem downtown, and you're saying this is best for the town. How many hours are we spending here for something that doesn't look like this is best for the town? Mr. Martin made a comment about how pristine that Great Moose Lake is, it's not going to be with commercial area. This is not what's good for the town, and that's my comment.
I'm David Dugall, probably anyone's been more than five years ago to me. Mine is more of a comment, I know when we were doing the comprehensive plan from 16, and then... I think a great percentage of the people living on Great Moose Drive don't see the addition of the brewery as adding to their quality of life. My second point would be, that is essentially a camp road. Infrastructure-wise, inadequate, for the amount of traffic that's going to be on it, if they, if some ways down the road, they decide to do a live show, I don't think the road would handle the traffic that well. So, my question would be, to the planning board, anyone on the planning board, oh, I know there's an engineer up there, is the road adequate to support a business? And question, the second part of that is, is there a way to mitigate any smells that come from the brewing of beer?
So, a question had been laid out there for the planning board, who's going to respond?
I have no idea. I wasn't there when they built the road, don't know what's underneath it, what, how, if it was built to any specs. Without that information, I could not give you any answer to that.
So, we have a comment here, not necessarily to anybody, just a comment?
Yeah, my name's Ken White, I live on Great Moose Drive. The residents that bought land on that road, and the river, and the lake, that was residential property when they bought it, it was residential property way before any, a lot of people moved onto that road, and the fact that it's been changed from one property to some sort of business, I would just ask the residents of Heartland to ask themselves, how would they feel if you had property, and it could be generational, that someone would build a commercial business next to your house?
I live on Chain Road, how about that, is that better? So, I guess this is for Chris. On the special town meeting for June 5th, Article 2, there's an increase of $30,000 due to the anticipated cost of legal expenses. Can you explain what that is in detail?
Yeah, it actually, the request is for the $30,000, for, if you read it, it says anticipated legal costs. We're picking a number, we don't have any idea if that's enough or not enough, we spent several, several thousand dollars on the landfill, there's no way to know what this is going to cost. There's three attorneys in the room right now.
I got back here just in time to go walk again, right? Just make sure your hands are up.
Hi, Kathy, I live in Heartland. Chris, you just, there's three attorneys in the room, but we're only paying for one, correct? The town of Heartland's only paying for one? Okay, thank you. I have another question. If the draft, I can't remember who said it, that we have, it's Article 3, 4, 5, 6, identifies the nine businesses, if that's lumped into one article, how is that going to work for a vote? And are these individuals still going to have, will they have to submit a application and have that applied and approved within 120 days of what?
Yes, so, they would have to apply and get approval to the planning board 120 days from the time that it gets voted in. So, what we're proposing, Kathy, is actually doing them individually, just like you've been presented. I don't know that anybody is going to move backwards on that and say that we're going to do them as a whole, we spent quite a bit of time and effort getting that warrant prepared, so I suspect that's what the selectmen are going to pick, is the one that you have right there now, which will be done individually.
My question is for Chris, Tim Kiesberg, North Hatlen. First of all, she asked a question about the one attorney. I have two questions. One, who is the code enforcement officer that signed the Brian's Brewery permit?
Yep, the code officer at the time was Rick Dibidal.
Okay. Next question is, how much have we spent already on attorney fees?
I honestly do not know, I'd have to double check that, to be honest.
How long before we can get that information?
We can let you know at the next meeting that we have.
I forgot to put my Fitbit on, I could get some mileage in this evening. Any other questions on the floor? Yes, come right at you.
Hi, Debbie Tapley, I'm born and bred in Heartland, I live on the Camp Road, but I am not currently a voting town member, so...
Oh, that closer came out.
Okay, oh, I'm going to shout, here. I'm Debbie Tapley, and I was born and bred in Heartland, and I live on the Camp Road, and I still have property in Heartland, but I'm not going to be a voting towns person, because it's not my residence. So, my statement is really to the selectmen, and it was kind of answered, but I want to be very clear, that I think it would be not in the best interest to lump all of the properties together, because already there was enough confusion that the village properties were lumped in with the Camp Road properties. And, you know, I think it's a democratic process that the members of the town are going to get to vote on this, but if you roll it all into one, it is just going to, it's not going to lessen all of the... going to lessen all of the emotion that we've heard tonight.
I guess this is a question for Chris. I'm just wondering what exactly the permit that the code enforcement officer's had was for? I understand the LPI issued a permit for the holding tank.
The permit was for the structure of the holding tank?
So, it wasn't related to the operation of the actual business? So, there have been no actual town approvals from the code enforcement officer or planning board for the operation of Bryant's Brewery, just for the construction of the holding tank? So, just to clarify, there's been no actual town approvals by the code enforcement officer or the planning board for the operation of the business, it's just been for the installation of a holding tank?
Correct.
And DEP has since said that the holding tank, or CDCA, I guess, has since said that the holding tank is impermissible on the property?
The, that is their view, but they are working along with the attorney.
Okay, I just wanted to know that was their stance.
Yep, and just so you know, none of the other businesses we're talking about have any of the permits either.
Yeah, it's just that you brought up a permit that it had received, so I just wanted to clarify.
It has the most, it doesn't necessarily have the right one.
So, it is the most invalid.
It has the most.
And then I have a question for the planning board members, I don't know, I was just hoping one of you could, so give us, or give people who might not have been present for your last meeting, a little explanation of your stance on the spot zoning issue, what was your hesitation there? I don't know if one of you would like to speak to that or not.
Yeah, so we didn't address spot zoning. It was a public comment, but it was not the planning board taking, you know, we should have a spot zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for ceding your time, I really appreciate it.
So, it wasn't, sorry, it was my mistake, it wasn't the issue of spot zoning, it was the map is drawn. You had some hesitations about the shoreline zoning map when you were asked if you approve it in its current state?
Who had it?
I'm getting secondhand information, so I'd have to see.
So, the planning board took a vote, I'm the chair, allowed a motion that probably should not have been allowed, it was a negative motion, which is really not supposed to happen. It's supposed to be a motion, it's supposed to be a positive. It became a very confusing motion. That rests on me as a chair, I should not have allowed the motion to be stated as it was stated. It had to be stated a couple of times with an amendment, and it got voted on, the three people on the planning board voted to vote for the motion to not approve, and there was one that abstained.
Okay, and what was the reason for the motion to not approve from that?
You have to ask the individual members.
Well, I just wasn't present at the meeting, so I don't know if who voted for and who voted against, so if you could pass the mic, that would be great.
Hey, it's Tim Bollinger, on the planning board.
Oh, closer.
Oh, closer, okay. At that meeting, it was voting to for or against the zoning. During that motion, at that planning board meeting, I was, stood up, I didn't stand up, but I made a statement that I had been very confused, I don't understand about this is shoreline zoning. We have never had to make this decision on an article. It's always been, can they build it in that shoreline zoning or not? Do they need the qualifications or not? After I made my vote, and the meeting is over, I did not, I've only been on the planning board for four years. After this was all said and done, I didn't know you could abstain of voting. Had I known that, I would abstain my vote to get more information. This is one of the reasons why it was voted down. That's what I'm going to say for myself, and I'm not going to get it any further with anybody else. That is my statement, and as far as I'm going to go.
My name is Steve Sneak, and I live at 300 Bunkel Lane. I voted no, and notes were taken on the wording of that proposal, and it would be my suggestion
Hello, my name is Randy Butler, and I was at the planning board meeting last, I guess it was Wednesday night, where we discussed the topic. The subject of spot zoning did come up briefly, but it wasn't part of our overall discussion. So, that's just to clarify on the spot zoning. It was mentioned, but it wasn't part of our reasoning, I guess, for making that decision necessarily as a board. It might have been some individuals' reasons, but I don't think it was the overall board's decision regarding the spot zoning. There are various reasons that folks may have expressed as far as voting no for the overall, essentially the vote was voting overall to be in favor of the changes as far as the map, but voting down as far as Bryant's Brewery was the overall decision. My personal decision was related to not so much maybe what's going on right now, I don't have any skin in the game as far as what's going on right now, from what I understand, Mr. Bryant's, at least in part, trying to be responsible with it, so I don't have any major concern about what's going on right now. But my concern is, if we open it up to a commercial district, limited commercial district, I'm not sure how much, say, the town has over what goes on, you know, as a potential for growth, what goes on in the next 20, 30, 40 years. That's my main concern with the whole situation. That's all, thank you.
Hang just a second, Kathy?
Yeah.
You were...
Yeah.
Get right to you, Lisa.
On each of these articles that name the different businesses in town, they all say, "Shall the town of Hartland approve, shall the town..." What if the voters do not approve? What if five out of the nine are voting for, and then the remaining four are against? What is the process, the next step? Is it done?
Who are you asking, Kathy?
Probably John. Is it done? Is it over?
It's another very good question. In my view, the answer would be no, not done. What I have kind of alluded to earlier is, you know, there's potentially two pathways to address what are certain potential violations, properties that are in compliance. So, a very typical pathway is, well, one, you can prosecute in court, see what the judge says, or potentially you can enter into, if it's agreeable, and it's in compliance with a variety of legal frameworks, a consent agreement, it's just a settlement agreement. There's a variety of reasons why that may make sense for particular property, it's obviously very case-by-case specific. So, let's say for property A, there's been an activity there, assume that it's illegal, but it's been there for a very long time, and maybe they got advice from the town that they didn't need a permit, and they've been there for a very long time. Well, that may be an appropriate situation for one of those consent agreements, one of the settlement agreements we talked about. It's frankly sometimes somewhat unusual to have the pathway we've been discussing, it's very open, very transparent, where we're actually trying to look at the historic uses of particular properties, and actually bring them into compliance through a legislative action, as opposed to a settlement agreement. So, if it's voted down for one, or all of them, or a certain portion, that's not going to end the matter, you know, it's still going to be an open enforcement matter for those particular properties. And of course, that's where it comes into some of the legal review and analysis, what's the potential for prosecution, what's the prospects of having a reasonable consent agreement, a settlement agreement? Trying to resolve those particular property issues may involve remedial activities. It all depends, it's very fact-specific. But I think the current pathway is to try to have a, I'll call it, a cleaner start going forward, so that a lot of those historical issues in a property-by-property review from an enforcement perspective, doesn't necessarily have to be done, doesn't mean it's off the table though, to your point.
Hi, my name's Lisa Sauer, I live on Great Moose Drive, and Kim, I want to direct this question to you, I'm not sure that you're the person to answer it, but, so, my question is, if I owned a property on Great Moose Drive that was not in the shoreline zoning stuff that you have marked out on the map, could I open a business? Is that even within the rules?
Shoreland zoning applies to 250 feet from your normal high water mark. That's the only area that that applies to, and the river, of course, is included with that, and your lakes, and your ponds, and some wetlands do require certain setbacks as well, and the resource protection area has extra rules that are on top of that as well, as far as what you can do and what you cannot do in those areas. Other than that, the town does not have, besides their 20,000 square foot, off the top of my head, lot size, to build like a residential home throughout the town and other areas, there's other requirements that are required for that. But we don't have a commercial set besides that 60,000 in the shoreline zone, to my knowledge.
Okay, so, all of the talk about the plan would be to have the downtown as the business area with commercial development, doesn't really apply to the rest of the properties that are just residential properties. So, in theory, if I owned property on the Big U hillside of Great Moose Drive, then I could put in a commercial business?
You still need to put in a change of use permit, too.
Okay, but I could put in a commercial business, is that correct?
With a proper permit process, I can't say that you can't for sure, depending on what that business was.
Okay.
Right? She's out of the shoreline zone, and we do have change of use now in the new, out of town.
So, I'm Dana, we're the chair. So, her comment is, let's just take Bryant's Brewery, if he was 150 feet on the other side of Great Moose Drive, this wouldn't be an issue, right? If he just moved his building another 150 feet, he's out of the shoreline zone, and we don't have an issue. And I think that's the question that you're asking. So, basically, everybody that's on the Big U hillside of Great Moose Drive, most of them would be, if you wanted to open a commercial business, yes. And if Bob decided to move his business across the road, he could do that, and there would be no, there's no issues. The town does not have any commercial or residential zones, other than in the shoreline
John, you're looking like you want to say something.
In the event that this, this is the question I've had all along, and I haven't gotten it answered yet either. In the event that all of the properties get rezoned, and are allowed to conduct their businesses in that area, and we have one commercial zone on the lake, and we have all the other businesses downtown that, everybody voted yes, what is the step for the next guy, the day after the vote, if he wants to open a brewery, a commercial brewery? Will that be permitted use in the shoreline zone the day after the vote, or will there only be one allowed on that lake? And what will somebody need to do if they want to do an identical business as one that's already on the lake?
Who was that question to?
Anybody that can answer?
Is anybody in the audience would like to feel that one?
So, I'll do my best again. So, I think the answer would be, if we're solely looking at the shoreline zone, to be lawful, it would have to be in a shoreline zoning district, where that particular commercial use is allowed, subject to meeting whatever performance standards may be. So, for example, if it was a general development, I believe that would allow something akin to a brewery. If it was limited commercial, you know, limited commercial zoning district, the shoreline zoning, you're looking at light commercial activity, you're obviously going to look specifically at what type of brewery. I mean, brewery can be very large, if you had Guinness show up to have a huge facility, that may be different from a nano or some sort of microbrewery. So, you know, scope and size and character really do make a difference. But if you don't have any of those other zones that allow that commercial activity, then they're not allowed. So, they wouldn't, if there's only, if there's only general development in a certain area in a limited commercial development district, that's where it would be allowed, and where else it would not be. The only potential exception I can think of to that, I know you can have a campground, you can have a marina in the limited residential shoreline zone. Now, you couldn't have a principal use that is a, or call it a restaurant, or brewery, or name something like that. I guess in theory, it's potentially possible to have, you know, some sort of accessory or something that's, you know, part of whatever that operation may be. I mean, that's in theory possible as well, as part of those allowed uses. But absent that, I would say, you know, if you wanted to have more potential for commercial development, then you would come back and look at the zoning, say, well, do we want to amend the zoning? I mean, you can always do that at a future date. If you wanted to have more area, you know, maybe it's general development, maybe it's If you wanted to have more area, you know, maybe it's sharing development, maybe it's limited commercial, something that's reflective of then existing times and where the town wants to go. So it's always a possibility.
So the answer is, and I appreciate that answer, John, the answer is, if I went and bought a property right on the, in the shoreline zone on the lake, I could not open a commercial brewery because it would be a non-committed use after the vote is taken of the town meeting. There'd be no more allowed. It's limited, because the whole lake's going to be limited residential. The answer is yes. Yes.
Coming here, or you want to make?
Out here.
So, I don't know. I'm an army guy, I'm not a school guy, okay? To put it simply, if I had property next door to Mr. Bryant, because beer and beef turkey go good together, and I wanted to open a beef jerky shop, could I? Could we just say yes or no?
That's my question. I know, right? I think I stumbled on it.
So it depends on whether you're in the 250-foot zone of the lake.
I would be within the 250, that's what I'm asking, he is, I would be as well, right next door to him.
You wouldn't be able to do it based on the changes?
Okay, that's, thank you, thank you.
This is to grandfather.
But if you're serious about a beef jerky operation in town, I'd like to talk to you.
I can't open that firehouse either, no, Mark.
Yes.
John made me think of another question that someone asked me, and I told them I didn't know the answer. Why is the tannery building not included in the tent? Obviously, if anybody ever wanted to put anything in there, it would be a business, there would be people coming and going, and that's literally on the shore. Are we saying we would have to have another town meeting to, I mean, obviously, if somebody wanted to open something, if he wants to put beef jerky in that building and stuff, we'd have to approve it for planning and all those things, I understand that. But why was it not included now, just in case somebody comes along and wants?
The reason is that both the properties downtown for the tannery that they own are over 60,000 square feet, so they're, they're larger. They're larger, so they don't need to be on the list.
My name is Patricia Jandra. My husband Dana and I own a property right next to Bryant's, 995 Great Moose Drive. I could go on forever about the impact that having the brewery next to us has had on our enjoyment of the lake, but I won't, because I'll just limit this to one question. If Bryant decides to sell his property, what then?
Anyone want to feel that?
Do again my best to answer the questions. It's a very good question, I think it really has two elements to it, which might change over time. So assume, and make some assumptions for a moment, so if their zone change is approved regarding the Bryant Brewing property, and a new, a change of ownership occur, and there were no other issues, then I would say, which is very typical of any zoning, it kind of runs with the land, runs with the property. As been articulated tonight, there's also a holding tank issue. So it's not an absolute given that that would be the case. So it's, I can't sit here today and give you an answer that anyone can come in and just continue that business in perpetuity, no matter who it may be, because there still may be other issues that are not specifically shoreline zoning issues, that still nonetheless need to be addressed. Those were identified tonight, the holding tank items, an item.
I just want to know, not just whether they're going to continue the brewing industry or business, but any business could go in there, because the zoning is now changed for that one property, correct?
That's the potential, true, the boot is, it would have to fit within what would be allowed in that particular shoreline zoning district, like commercial.
Hi, everyone, my name's Alicia Lambert. I live at 203 Chincette Road in Heartland, and I have several questions. The first of which, to Kim? Can you please explain why the... Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? How about now? Can you please explain why the decision was made to include arenas as acceptable for all zoning types, specifically limited residential, with the exception of resource protection and a board?
Marinas have been allowed since at least 2009 and prior with planning board approval. I did not make that change, that was what's been in there all along.
Okay, perhaps we should consider changing that. A second question, can you please explain how Bryant's Brewing will be compliant as a manufacturing business in limited commercial? Clearly, their business meets the description of G D one as a manufacturing, packaging, and processing business. Their business is industrial per the definition of the ordinance and is better suited for G D one. Would they not be immediately non-compliant if this draft passes as a manufacturing business?
That's your opinion that it's a manufacturing business. I don't have anything to support that it is or is not.
Thank you. Can anyone answer this question? What was the zoning in town pre-2009? In downtown area?
General development on G D one.
Thank you. What was in Great Moose Drive?
It would be, I couldn't tell you, I think it's limited, limited residential, how to confirm.
Thank you. The reason I ask this question is to point out that perhaps we should not further add to the mistakes of others. Just because incorrect zoning was passed in 2009 does not mean we should ride their coattails. We need to do what's best for the lake right now. Additional questions? Does the town of Heartland have code in place for parking space requirements for business?
Parking for, I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear you.
Parking for a business.
Would you not have a parking, or a noise, or a parking ointance for anywhere in town?
Thank you.
Except for snow removal, let me fix that. Snow removal, when you can't park on the...
Can anyone answer this question? It's probably for Chris. What news is there of the contents of the letter dated December 30th, 2022, from the main D E P regarding the illegally installed hole-in-tank? Has the deadline been extended yet again beyond April 28th?
So I'll answer that question. So as was mentioned earlier, there was a meeting and discussion of D E P and other representatives, specifically with respect to that letter and everything following that. So the discussion in broad terms, there's focus on the two issues, the very same two issues that we've been talking about this evening with respect to Bryant's brewing. So the first was the shoreline zoning piece, the other is the holding tank piece. So clearly, the discussion and efforts have been focused on, I'd say both, but the shoreline zoning is the one that we're here discussing tonight. The, through discussions that I've had with the Attorney General's office, we are looking to see how this resolves. So the date has come and gone, to my understanding, you know, we are making progress on trying to come to a resolution. So I can't speak for the Attorney General's office, I can't speak for the main D E P, but the town has taken what I would say a proactive approach, that's how, hence I got involved, to help address these issues. So that's what we are working towards.
So the deadline has gone, come and gone, we are now beyond the deadline, and it has yet to be extended.
That's not what I said. I think if you want to ask about whether or not the D E P or others have extended a deadline, I can't speak for them. My understanding is, it's not, the date they had in there is not an issue at present, because of the proactive nature the town has taken to help address these issues.
Okay, thank you. Kim, I think I have one more question for you. Is there adequate land on Robert Bryant's one-acre lot for installing a subsurface disposal system as the D E P requires? Would you be the one responsible for approving it? And if so, would you approve it?
That is not a code, that's an L P I, the Local Plumbing Inspection, so that is out of my scope and out of my code range, that is not me that does this.
Okay, who would? And who can answer that question?
That would be the local plumbing inspector.
Okay, as far as that tank goes, it really is a red herring here. I know we've talked about it, we've made it sound like it's the biggest problem the world's ever seen, but I am a master plumber, and according to the I M O code, which is one state domain adopted, that tank was permitted and installed according to the I M O code. Now, it is not a system, it is a holding tank. For anybody that doesn't understand what that is, if you have contents going to a tank that are either corrosive in nature, above a certain parts per million, acidity, there's a lot of reasons why you would do this, instead of having a subsurface system go to either pods, go to a bleach field, whatever, and to answer your question, did he have space to do it? No. Is what the contents that he's putting into it, that is the only one that would be acceptable? It's 715 in the code, and it states if the characteristics of the water you're putting in here are something that has to be pumped, which his does, taken to an off-site facility, which it is, okay? Now, if he wants to, he could put a polymer tank in the next day over, make it part of his brewing thing, and that is over. It is no longer a subsurface system, it's part of his brewing process. Now, so we're back to zoning. If that's what he chooses to do, he can do that. The tank is not the real issue, it's more a red herring. I just want everybody to understand, it's not the big bad guy in the world, it really isn't. It's an issue with the C B C, they don't like it, but the local plumbing inspector, in his rights, said, yes, that is the way to do this, this is how you will install it, this is a permit you will, put it to effect, I will inspect it, and, okay, here we are. So I hope that helps with the tank thing.
My concern and my question about the tank is for the safety of the lake.
It is to sa, it is the...
And the impact. Yep, I understand that, yep, I hear you.
Containing it, all right?
Yep, and it's being taken, and it's being trucked away.
It is, it doesn't get better than that.
As it is now. However, that letter that I read said that that's not compliant, and that they're being, they're asking to put in a subsurface system.
That is a subsurface system. It is below grade because of the type of tank that he chose, okay? He put it below grade because that is what it's U L listed for. If he went to a polymer tank, and it was listed for rough ground, and it had the compliance to discharge his waste into it, and then it got trucked out, wouldn't even be a conversation. It would be above ground, they wouldn't, it wouldn't be part of this conversation at all. So I just want to make it, I understand your concerns, you don't want it going into the lake, neither would I. If I built a permit as a master plumber, and I heard what he had to say, okay, this is what I'm doing. The stuff that's going into his tank just a short time ago, or just a short time after, it's in the collection you're bringing in, it's not really that bad. However, it does have a certain amount of content to it that it needs to be trucked away. So that's why it was done, that's why it's captured, that's why he has a pumping schedule that he has to do, has alarms on the tank for high-level content. He's done that part right. So when he said it's installed illegally, I don't think I would go that far if that...
Okay, but the D E P did.
It's more the C B C that had the issue with it than the D E P.
Okay, regardless, thank you for your answers, I appreciate your speaking up. Most importantly, my last questions are for all of the attendees. The most important question, as I see it, is what's the best decision for the health and longevity of the lake? Is it allowing one family's business to continue when the proper application and permitting wasn't submitted in the first place? Do we believe that proper approval will be sought in the future for other businesses that may wish to open in that space, but history tells us it didn't happen originally? Do we believe this ordinance draft and its exceptions set the correct precedent for the current and future generations who wish to enjoy the lake? I believe we need to make some changes to this draft that better reflect the lake's best interest. Thank you for all of your time and consideration.
Just to throw it out there, we have something else to be talking about this afternoon, actually this evening. And if you're done with this, then we'll move on to the next topic this evening. We're not done.
It's quite interesting, some of the comments I've heard today, including some of the legal comments, because I'm going to talk on there. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, my name's Terry McGee, I live on 2084 Pond Road. My wife and I moved here in 2017, makes us our permanent home, permanent residence, we're year-round residents. I previously mentioned my experience as chief engineer in Washington County, Maryland, not to say I want to be like Maryland, I do not want that at all. What I try to impress upon everyone is I have considerable experiences in codes and ordinances, writing, reviewing, and generating, and I have to commend the town for what they're doing. In this room alone, you can see very diverse opinions, yet the town must come up with a single ordinance to try and satisfy everyone. What is very concerning, though, is that certain individuals do not wish to have an open and honest discussion about all the various issues that are involved in the ordinance. Instead, they're using the ordinance as a document intended for the betterment of the community, because they have problems with a particular business, okay? Some of these, some of this is just honest misunderstandings, other are intentional to try and confuse the issue. What I'd like to do is comment on some of this misinformation that's been presented at various times throughout the discussions over the last month, two months, this whole issue's going on. A claim has been made that Bryant's Brewing has decreased property values by 20%. I've checked the three separate appraisers, all with at least 24 years' experience in the area and with Bryant's Brewing, and they said, there's no discount to the property values due to Bryant's Brewing, none. That's three professional appraisers. There's also an entity out there, an individual who has both had a market analysis and appraisal done to their property, both before and after the brewery. Property value's gone up, okay? Late-night noise coming from the brewery, they close, and they're later than seven. Late night noise coming from the brewery, they close in the later than seven. It's not them. Traffic, traffic generated by the brewery, backs out in the road, blocks traffic, drives too fast and reckless. To make assertion that all traffic problems on Great Moose Drive or through Bryant's Brewery are just not true. Having been on the road long enough, that I can see, those of you that live along the road certainly can see, problem driver, many problem drivers do in fact live on the road. Several things regarding traffic, many issues been said. Backing to traffic, Bryant's Brewery has a circular driveway allowing people to pull out, not back out in traffic, and they're doing a good job policing it. I'll remind everyone, the property owners out there pushed to town eight, eight or so years ago to have Great Moose Drive paved because it was in, it was in tough shape. All right, well, it's universally understood, you pave and widen the road, you will get increased speeds. That is not, that is not unique, that's a universal phenomenon. Also understand that the curving nature of the roadway helps slow traffic. That's in the favor for those that complain about that. Great Moose Drive is a 20-foot wide paved road, just the same as Athens roads, and Athens Road carries a lot more traffic and a lot higher speeds. So, the earlier comment about is the road adequate, very much so, depending on the size of the venue. I won't get into the engineering and how we measure all that kind of stuff, but it's more than adequate for considerable traffic. The taxpayers of Heartland Paved, paid for a paved roadway, not a 20-foot wide walking path. Under Maine law, Title 29A in the Motor Vehicle and Traffic Section, it says at park where sidewalks are not provided, a pedestrian shall walk facing approaching traffic on the left side of the public way or the way shoulders if applicable. Walking down the middle of the road with kids in tow, pets in tow, is not acting responsibly. Okay, no one's in accordance with Maine law. Should there be a vehicle pedestrian interaction, rest assured, pedestrians are gonna lose. All right? Those who elect to rent their cottages out, um, have very little control over the habits and the traffic nature of those who use renters to put their rent in for their vacation, and they're gonna wanna make the use of it. What that means is anyone's guess. All right? Uh, Bryant's is the state that was not previously used as a garage associated with the car business, therefore can't say it was a business before and continues business operation. He has a letter from Mr. Raul clearly stating that it was used as part to support his car automobile business. Bryant's did not seek appropriate permits and is a legally established business. As we've heard, all of the affected businesses, laundromat included, obtained the permits they were instructed to obtain. All right? So, if someone wishes to use the word "a legally established business," is they need to apply it to all of them. Okay? And the purpose of the provision of the ordinance is to get them all legal and compliant. And I would like to commend the town for picking out two that are currently vacant and going ahead and including them in the process to help encourage businesses to locate there by having it a zoning cleaned up for them. This is contentious one, but businesses should be located in the center of town, that was in one of those mass mailings that went out. That is actually, uh, an older thought process, especially for low-impact businesses, the more current philosophy is to incorporate it in the, in the communities that are gonna serve. In the last forty years, entire communities have been built with that as their premise, not to have a central core, but have the businesses spread out closer to the, closer to the customers. All right, Bryant Brewing hurts the water quality of the lake, this is absolutely not correct. Since the Bryant's have purchased the property, they've done two things. The garage, all the drains in the garage previously ran directly into the lake. So, whatever hit the floor and was washed down to drains, it ended up in the lake. It now ends up in a holding tank and is hauled away to a surge keeper plant. They have also installed considerable riprap, and riprap ditches and riprap slope protection, all based on DEP's guidance, far, far eliminating, or greatly eliminating, the erosion that previously happened there in a sediment load being directly carried into the lake. They have done an environmentally sensitive job to that property in proving situations. Calling Bryant's Brewery a restaurant or a bar? Uh, that is not truly the truest sense of the words of either a restaurant or a bar generating large amounts of traffic. As it is, it is a small establishment, very small traffic generator. Now, make no mistake, there are issues with Great Moose Drive. However, they cannot be attributed to Bryant's Brewing, nor will eliminating his business fix them. We've already heard, he can open up a narrow side of the road, along with a whole host of other businesses can open up on the other side of Great Moose Drive as long as their outside is 250 feet, okay? Property owners are changing, where seasonal cottages are being converted to year-round residences, new homes are being built, all of this increases traffic. Some of the residents along Great Moose Drive go to significant effort in picking up trash, beer cans, wine bottles, liquor bottles. All right, Boat Ramp attracts numerous visitors, including seven to eight bass tournaments a year. These vehicles can be quite large and without a doubt, they are not always the best drivers as they run in and out because their, their mind is focused outward. These are not Bryant's Brewery's issues. Yes, there's issues on the roads, they're not Bryant's. Something I would misunderstand, or mis- misunderstand believing that zoning, the zoning classification, and that's what we're talking about this year, is an end-all. It is not, it is basically the first step. Even if you have a permitted use, unless you comply with a whole litany of other things, the business may never happen. Yes, mariners have been allowed on this lake since the early zoning days, there's not a marina out here, why not? I suspect because the market says, can't support it. All right, so there's a whole host of decisions, everything from flood plan, stormwater management, erosion settlement controls, aside from building, all kinds of other stuff that you have to meet, not just zoning. In closing, Heartland has a form of local government that allows residents to vote on specific issues such as this, it is a true democratic process. What is concerning is that we have individuals that have sent letters, copied back to, to the city, basically putting them unnoticed, that if they don't like the outcome of the vote of the democratic process, they may bring suit. I guess so much the democratic process and majority rules. Now, while we don't know what the actual cost will be, I'd like to remind everyone that right now, the town has invested upwards of $250,000 in the various litigation and issues, and engineering issues associated with the landfill. There's only $30,000 added to the current budget compared to 250, I suspect that if this runs to full length and the suit is filed, 30 will not even begin to be enough to cover the living fees. And as we've heard, don't believe they'll be covered by insurance. I mean, has the town not already exerted enough effort on the issues? They've been working weeks and weeks and months, meeting with the DEP and everyone else, trying to come to a resolution that is fair for everyone. I would suspect the town has better things to spend their money on and exert their effort on. So, I certainly am supporting voting yes for the ordinance and the various warrants, and I believe I would, I would do so in supporting all of the town businesses. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good evening, I'm Rick Milligan, I live on Lamar Pond Road, but I've been to the brewery a number of times. But to just follow up on something you mentioned, he closes at seven, but all the events he's ever had, including his mother's birthday, which I wasn't invited to because it was a family thing, he advertised and he held strict to it, starts at one, ends at five, that's four hours, then he closes at seven. So, the idea of one guy standing with a acoustic guitar singing into a microphone beside him is a concert, that, that's a stretch way out there, so. And, I don't know why he wanted to blow this thing out of proportion when it's really a small event where people come by, drink a few beers, listen to some homegrown music, local people, and enjoy themselves. Okay, that's it, that's what the lake is for. I grew up on Unity Lake and all summer long, it was people coming to the lake and enjoying themselves. There's a lot of people around Great Moose that frequent there, drive their boats over in the morning for a coffee and sit out and look at the lake, they're enjoying themselves. You're gonna take that away from all those people that choose to go there and enjoy themselves because you're discontent with what's going on there. I don't think it's them, okay? It's not a bar, it's not a restaurant, one to five doesn't make a concert. So, tell it like, like you want, but tell it like it is, that's all I gotta say, thanks. Okay, so, um, seriously?
Good evening, Bob Bryant, I own with Zach Bryant's Brewery, so, I, uh, as I said in the last unofficial public meeting, I'm the reason for the kerfluffle, uh, I'm the reason why we're all here, uh, and let's be very clear about why we're here. This is a public hearing to hear the pros and cons about keeping Bryant's Brewery open on the lake. Obviously, the crowd is very well peppered tonight with negativity, thank you very much. I'd be surprised if there's a person in this room who feels that any of the businesses in the center of town that aren't already closed should be closed due to the lack of process that they went through to get established in the shoreline zone. Rather, there's a small, uh, number of folks on Great Moose Drive who wanna have my home business shut down for those same reasons. For that is what it truly is, a home business located in my garage on the lake. And let's be clear about the, let's be clear about what it is. We don't have a restaurant, we don't have a bar, what we do have is a very small brewery and a coffee roastery. We serve only our beer and brew coffee and hot chocolate for the people who come in. We do serve some small items like muffins and egg sandwiches to go with our coffee for breakfast, or perhaps some nuts, or soup, or chili even, we might even have hot dogs or sliders on the weekends. But to call Bryant's Brewery a restaurant is like calling the Snow Devil's snowmobile club a restaurant because they serve chili, hot dogs, and hamburgers on the weekends. Suffice to say, the exaggerated and sometimes ludicrous crank claims made to support those who seek to shut us down have at times caused me to cry tears of sadness and laughter. But I'm here to talk about community and what makes a community. When I moved back to Maine, I was excited to come back and help the local communities in Central Maine to try and regain some of the economic vitality I recall in this area having as a kid. The first thing I did was join the Board of Trustees for Maine Central Institute. It's been a pleasure to serve on the board. Volunteerism of this nature, giving of your time, helps a community. This is not unlike the work of Hadley Bueller and Elmer Littlefield, who have given of their time to ensure Heartland pays tribute to its veterans in its country by hanging and maintaining all the flags of town. That is community. Running for and becoming a member of the select board is community. And I'd like to publicly apologize to Vicky Palmeroy for those who treated her badly. There is absolutely no reason one should be treated poorly simply because they run for office. That is not community. When I went to the planning board to propose my business and what I needed to make it a reality, I was invested into the community. I did so in a manner consistent with what was required and asked for by the planning board. Frankly, that was no easy task and I went back three times. Derek Littlefield was the most demanding of the members of the board. That is community, volunteering on a town board to help ensure the proper investment is made in the town. Community is also investing in and going through the process required of you to establish yourself in the town. Bryant's Brewery did everything the town and the state required me to do. In the last unofficial public hearing, it was made to appear that the Littlefields, and Chris specifically, was responsible for everything that happens in town and for the makeup of the planning board. Now, the planning board voted against the shoreline zoning ordinance as written. My understanding, and it's been shown here tonight, is that the members did not really understand what it was they were voting for. We won't discuss who participated in that meeting, but suffice to say, it's quite clear the accusations from the last meeting were baseless. Accusations like that are definitely not community and only serve to divide, not bring a community together. We had a number of accusations levying against us last time about blocking Great Moose Drive due to the five events we had last summer. We did have five events, four of them were promoted by the brewery. As mentioned, they were pretty small concerts. The fifth, on the hottest weekend of the year, and the one with which I had some minor traffic issues, was a personal event, the celebration of my mother's 90th birthday. Regardless, at each event, I had volunteers working to direct traffic and take people up to Vicky Road to park so we didn't block Great Moose Drive. But there were no golf carts, as said by someone who was clearly misinformed, rather, we used my Dodge Ram pickup truck. I don't own any golf carts. We ensured Great Moose Drive was never blocked in front of my house. I'm certain you'll agree with me that celebrating one's mother's 90th birthday is not only community, but it's a son's obligation. It is just the same as all the other weekly celebrations that happen on Great Moose Drive in the summer, blocking the road with their traffic because that's what we do in a community. We celebrate life's major events. Laundromats are community. They provide a place for those without home access to machines to come wash, wash their clothes at a fair price. Grocery stores are community, providing a local spot to come and pick up the items you need for dinner, meeting your neighbors in the aisle for a check. Restaurants and diners are community. They provide a place to go and pick up something to eat when you don't want to or can't make it yourself. And if you're lucky, you'll run into your neighbors or friends while you're there, or even go together. Breweries and coffee houses are community. They provide a place to get together and meet your neighbors and form new friendships over a beer or a cup of coffee. Since we opened in February of 22, Zach and I have met many great people, both residents and non-residents alike. Every person who we've welcomed into our home business in the garage have come in and stated, "How cool is this?" And, "We're so glad you're here." We've seen many new friendships develop and increase community on the lake because there is now a local place to meet your neighbors, whether next door, across the lake, or even in the next town. New residents to the area stop in to meet their neighbors. Prospective residents who are here to check out real estate on the lake stop in to see what it's like in Heartland and ask us, "How is this community?" We always tell them it's warm and inviting. What is not community is seeing a new business open on your street and instead of going to talk with the owners, you immediately start a campaign to close them down. What is not community is anonymously reporting your neighbors for false violations of state laws, requiring the state to spend the time and taxpayer money to send a person to your house to make sure that you're not putting new buildings on your property. And finally, what is not community is threatening to sue the town you live in because you don't like the outcome of a town vote. Policy number 18 on page 133, here's the quote, Chris, "Of the Heartland Comprehensive Plan in State, promote Great Moose Lake as a destination in the region and encourage reasonable development." Let me assure you- Let me assure you, having a nano brewery and a five pound coffee mostery in my garage on Great Moose Lake is reasonable development. And as anyone who has seen our Cheers from Maine segment on TV and online will know, we are doing our best to promote Great Moose Lake as a destination in the region. That is community. So on June fifth, please stand up with me and proudly vote yes for the new shoreline zoning ordinance. Vote yes for each of the businesses in town. Let's build community, get the town past this nonsense, and move forward. Thank you. Okay, I'm seeing a lot of the audience has disappeared. We haven't, oh, I'm sorry. I should be fired. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Bobby actually told us what I wanted to say. Hello. Um, Bobby, thanks for the lead-in because you just said everything I wanted to talk about, which is the reason that my husband and I moved here from Southern Maine was because when we walked into this place, we loved it so much and we could see our family and our grandkids and we could see everybody coming here and enjoying it and enjoying the people of this place. I've been to the Toll's yard sale at the barn and I loved it. I got some really great things more than one time. I had to go do my laundry at the laundromat a few times when we had a flood in the basement and when our washer broke. I love to go to Wright's in the morning on Sunday and see, I think the real selectmen are there on Sunday morning, by the way. A group of gentlemen that are always talking about what's going on in town. If I need my eggs or my milk and the moose market isn't open, I always can count on Wright's. If I forget to buy balloons for a birthday party or whatever I need for celebrating with my family, I can go to the Dollar General and I can, or Dollar Tree, I'm not sure which one it is, but it's there. It's for me. I can buy Christmas decorations or whatever I need. I can go to Mammy's or Hometown and I'm not gonna fight about who's better because they're both there and they're part of our community. It's what keeps us going. It's what makes things, you know, important to you. And Brian's is one of those places. I can go to Brian's and I've met more people on Great Moose Drive having a cup of coffee or having hot chocolate with my grandkids or having a beer and talking to them and learning that they're from the same place that I came from or that they know somebody that maybe I know and that just gives me a sense of belonging here. Um, so I never understood why my mother liked town politics because I really hate it. You can hear the crackling in my voice. It makes me sad. But she loved it. She loved the fight and I think a lot of people that are here enjoy it. I personally don't, but I would enjoy to get to know all of you and I would enjoy to have conversations with you and I would enjoy it if I could see the people around me, not just here, but everywhere. Try to get along. I don't understand why we're constantly fighting with each other and trying to do things to not see the person next to us succeed. So that's my, that's my only statement. I'm supportive of all of the businesses here. I don't know what owners are here. I know the Toll's are here and I know Bobby's here, but otherwise, I support any of you that are doing business. So keep it up. It's important for all of us and, you know, have a great night. I'm gonna go eat now.
Alrighty then. We also have one thing we want to discuss tonight. And that's the building and property maintenance ordinance, I believe. You're telling out again?
We do have one more thing after this too. For those people that have seen this probably, I don't know, it's a year in the making. It's way more than a year. The building and property maintenance ordinance. Does anybody have any questions? It's on the website as well for the town of Heartland. This last summer I started doing this. Everybody's leaving. Nobody wants to talk trash. It looks like that is a game happening. I did put a lot of work into it. If you have questions, you can reach out to me. I appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody have any questions on it? What am I gonna do about the properties that are just like?
If this is enacted, what are we gonna do about the properties that are already in dismay? I mean, we've had several, we've had several meetings where the town doesn't wanna get involved because it's gonna cost too much money to clean up the property.
Well, I can tell you one thought on my processes is how I go in is not the same maybe as the previous do. I go in and try to work with the owners, see what the holdup is, see if they have a reason that their property may not be up to the standards that we're gonna, that have in there by just simply talking to them first. So lowest level is the first approach. Before you start calling people in a court, coming at them like that, that just doesn't become effective. So I just did the lowest level approach and I start, and I have to start writing letters, certified letters, pictures, documentation. There's a whole list and you can find it on the local health officer site too, that you go through a process before you can even think about taking somebody to court. And whether the courts will hear that or not is a whole different story as well. A lot of them won't even hear a case like that. So I have gotten positive results just by talking to people and then there's some people that just won't budge and those are the cases that we keep documenting and following. And hopefully at some point we can either get them to apply without court or at some point they never come back and we can say, hey, what have we gotta do now at this moment?
Okay, the final ordinance that we wanna present at the next town meeting, the special town meeting, is the planning board ordinance for the town of Heartland. And the reason that we're doing this, we found some old documentation from years ago about setting up a planning board, but it didn't have a lot of details. And through this process, there's been some question, questions on whether our planning board is valid. I assure you that they are. And thank you all for what you do and thank you for being here tonight. It's very important that we keep moving forward. The planning board ordinance that we're putting out here tonight, again, is to just provide some more clarity to the positions and to the responsibilities. So I don't know if there's any questions on that at all. Something near and dear to me because I used to be a selectman and the opportunity to clean up property and do it correctly and do it legally is the way to go. We were so frustrated in time that I was on the select board. You didn't have any meat. We're gonna have some meat, so. Come on the sixth, is it?
Fifth.
Fifth. I love the attendance tonight. It's fantastic. I see everybody's leaving and I know it's late. It's frustrating. But come the fifth, please, come vote. Thank you for coming back.
I just got a comment.
Oh, what? Sorry.
I really, I just got a comment because nobody gives kudos to anybody. I recently went through the planning board and chem. And we actually, I believe, I think I'm speaking correctly. Dan can correct me if I'm wrong, but we went all from the new shoreline because I am shoreline. Process was excellent. No issues. They're doing a great job. They don't give enough kudos and they need to.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That concludes our meeting for tonight. Thank you so much for coming.